It's 5:30, so we will call the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission to order. The first order of business is we will declare this a... Sit down for nothing. We will declare this a public hearing and the Loudoun County Code's Enforcement Director, Jim Jenkins, will speak.
Thank you, commissioners. This is item A. Is a resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on the approval of residential subdivisions connecting to county roads pending the adoption of updated road standards and requirements for development approvals.
So we're putting the moratorium in place or the county commission?
This planning commission will vote on the resolution to impose this moratorium. It will go from there to county commission.
Anybody to speak to? Does someone make a motion to approve?
This is...
I'm sorry. Didn't look far enough lit.
I'm hiding on the side. My name is Pat Hunter, and I guess my question or my concern would be, I read the resolution, and there are a couple of concerns that I have. It says that the commission study population growth and the conditions of the road on the county road list, increased incident numbers on said roads, and the safety. And my question, I go to all meetings, and I'd like to know when it was discussed, where the population growth and the items that it's talking about, where we can find those, first of all. I've gone to meetings, and I've heard citizens share concerns, and I'm also a little bit puzzled. We haven't heard from the road commissioner, the road superintendent, and I think it's really important to have his input, and I've yet to hear that. The other thing that I'm concerned about, when you were talking about road standards, I think somebody brought up the issue, well, would it also apply to the county? Now, I know in this case, it's talking about 10 lots or 10, you know, 10 developments or 10 units at that particular, you know, zoning request. But what I want to know, if we're talking about 18 and 20 feet, I'd like to hear from the road superintendent about the safety issue. I'd also like to see the numbers of incidents and accidents on the roads, and whether, how the county is going to address this. If we're talking about widening streets from 18 to 20 feet, I would like to know what kind of impact it's going to have on the county. I haven't heard how many roads would this would build, you know, fall under, so that's another issue. And then when we're talking about widening roads, how would that work? You know, it's always been my impression that when we're talking about the county and their widening roads, they're doing it on the county level, and either they have right-of-way, or are we talking about condemnation issues if they, if they don't have an easement? Those are all issues that I think need to be addressed before any moratorium is put in place. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I just think that there hasn't been enough information, at least to the public, to address my concerns about road safety. Thank you.
Well, I think that's the purpose of the moratorium, is to allow us and county commission or whoever, Mr. Pickle, the road commissioner, to develop these issues that you bring. But tonight, we're just starting the development.
But hasn't...
For a period of six months.
But hasn't this issue been before county commission prior to now? Shouldn't we have more information already brought to this body, or at least the concerns enumerated, to this body to address these issues? I feel that there's a lack of communication between the county commission and this planning body, and unless we see some, some information or some studies or something in place, to me, it would be hard to even consider a moratorium without more information from the legislative body that is requesting this. Thank you.
What did you decide? What did you decide?
That we're going to deal with it. We're going to work through the issues. I'll make a motion to approve.
Well...
We have to be able to leave for a...
Currently, this is just a public hearing. So once the public has time to speak, chairman can feel free to close that portion and open up the meeting with a roll call and pledge.
I do have a question real quick, Mr. Chairman, if I can. As far as, I know this has come before the planning commission, and I know it's been before county commission, but my curiosity is, do we have any legal advice from Bowman or from Pickle before we make the vote on this? I think it's a pretty supportive task, but is there any legal issue that the board needs to know before we, we pass this?
This resolution's come through Mr. Bowman's office.
And he's in support of it, no legal issues?
Well, this is a resolution he created for us to move through to take his process and his action for this period of time.
Any comment from Highway, Pickle?
As far as I know, Mr. Pickle's supportive of whatever they prefer, would choose to do in this matter.
But...
Anybody else in the audience want to address this issue? If not, we have a, a motion to...
We don't vote yet.
We don't?
No, sir. We just go through and...
Okay. All right. We, we will go to call the meeting to order, let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It has been brought to my attention that, item F, that the person requesting this has to leave and go to Kingston immediately. Do I have a motion that we move this to the front of the list?
So I went broke.
And we got, we didn't do that, did we? Roll call, please. I said hurry, get you out of the way.
Ryan Bright.
Here.
Jim Brooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Pete Buckles.
Here.
Pam McNew. John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Here.
Has, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November meeting?
So move.
Second.
Got a move and second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Now, we'll get to the fellow that's got to get to Kingston. Let me read your introduction here before we start. Resumee requests from A1 to A3 for 1 acre lot applicant Wade Loving, property owner Claude Bridges, tax map 067 parcel 134.00, located 25259 Sticky Road, A1 Agriculture Forestry District, District 1. And you must be Wade Loving.
I am, yes. We're doing MBI companies representing the property owners. We're trying to lead the estate of Claude Bridges. We're going to re-subdivide one piece of property with the house, and the lot size, after the, after the changes of the zoning this last year, was, didn't qualify, so we had to rezone it for that purpose. And if the remaining property is greater than 5 acres, it's quite a good sized piece of property.
Any problem, Jim?
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank you, guys, very much. Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Okay, item A. Subdivision plat for 4 lots to 2 lots. Applicant Richard Lemay, property owner Michael Goldsboro, tax map 036F through bay parcel 009.00 through 012.00, located Deep Cove Lane, A1 Agriculture Forestry District, F1 floodway District, District 3. Mr. Lemay?
Yes, we're trying to take 2 lots and make them into 2 lots. But the man that's going, we've been through the road closure process, a portion of the gravel road has extended to these parts, and now this is the last step of the days of trying to get this plat approved. Appreciate y'all approving it.
Good to go, Jim. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Did we have a second? Got a move and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
B, subdivision plat for 8 lots to 2 lots. Applicant 3D land survey, property owner James Allison, trustee, tax map 016A group B, parcel 001.00 through 007.00. Tax map 016A?
Yeah, they changed them.
Group B parcel 01600, located at 875 Allen Road, R1 suburban residential district, District 6. Mr. Allen here?
My motion returned.
Second. Got a motion to table and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. C. Preliminary subdivision plat for 22 lots. Applicant David Harbin, property owners David and Alvin Cross, tax map 028, parcel 032.00, located Beale Chapel Road, R1 suburban residential district, District 6. Mr. Harbin?
Mr. Harbin's here as well as Mr. Cross. I'm Ben Mullins, I represent the applicant on this. This is, this has been before this body before, back in September of 2020, and this same plat was approved then. Market changed with COVID, and so the, the property owner didn't move forward to develop this, and so now this plat expired, and he's come back and asking that it be approved a second time. Nothing, nothing has changed. We just updated stormwater and the hydrology. This is 22 lots on 30 acres, and it's an extension of the Miller's Landing subdivision already. It's going to attach to, or connect to Blue Heron Drive, which is 24 feet pavement. So it meets current regulations, and it would meet the regulations that you all talked about with the moratorium as well. So, you know, there's no reason not to approve this. You know, it's a wooded lot, we're going to try to keep as many trees as possible in large lots that meets the minimum requirements. We've got the stormwater, we've already, we've already got our NPDES, our SWIPs through the state on this, so I'd ask that you approve. Mr. Harbin, Mr. Cross are here to answer any questions y'all might have as well.
And it has been approved once.
Been approved once, September 2020.
What is their expiration date on, on that, Jim? Four years or three?
Well, they have three years of vesting rights.
Still has my pet peeve a little, no outlet. Dead end cold sack, but that's just my pet peeve.
I understand the way to connect to something else, but it really isn't on this lot.
Is this that property where that old house sits?
Yes, grandfather's old house is still out there on the, I guess it's still a road.
It's still standing?
It was several months ago. Well, it's down there, yeah. That's, that's our grandfather's old home place. They were moved off Norris and moved down here, and all those got flooded out again, but not quite.
Everything in order, Jim?
Yeah, the only thing they won't have, obviously, is the sidewalks. These lots are all greater than 1 acre, even though it's on R1. Miller's Landing doesn't have sidewalks in it either, so if everything else is in order, they would not want to put sidewalks in on this development. They were approved, as he said, a few years ago.
Without sidewalks in it.
Yes, sir.
Anybody here in opposition? I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a move and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank y'all very much.
D. Resumee requests from A2 to A3 for 3 or 4 1 acre lots. Applicant property owner Gary and Tammy Mills, tax map 049, parcel 082.00, located at 9841 Vonor Road, A1 Agriculture Forestry District, District 1. Gary and Tammy, Gary and Tammy, I, second.
Yes.
Okay. What you got?
All right, what we want to do is add it to where, we're going to divide it out into...
1 acre lots. Instead of this way, going this way towards Udi.
Towards Udi Road, and then there'll be a road you can put in between the lots to where the people can come in and out. And I want to have restrictions that they can't put trailers or double eyes in, or they won't have to actually build a house. Because, you know, and it's this property that I had, that I just ain't able to take care of no more, and I'd rather put it to use for somebody.
Where's it, what, what road are they going to use?
They can use Udi, or they can use Vonor.
On Udi, Udi roads.
Yeah.
Udi road's real narrow. That's my, you know, I mean, it's, it's as narrow as any, any county road could be, and it's also, you know, that's, that's the, you know, that's my concern on that, on, especially with four, you know, making four parcels.
Is there, is there road frontage on, on those proposed upper ones?
They, I mean, they have road frontage on Vonor Road, and a portion of the property on Udi Road also. Just keep in mind, this is about a 9 acre track, so we can possibly get 3 to 4, 3 lots, you know, without any type of rezoning.
Right.
So if it were rezoned A3, you know, they can do 1 acre lots, if they can get them in on the, to the frontages and everything as discussed, several more, obviously, depending on lay, land laying and things of that nature. But if you're just asking for 4 lots, or 3, that's possible to do without rezoning.
And it's tough, we're talking about, it's kind of like this, we can do it also at at least 1, maybe 2, or at least 1 and 1.5 to cover that area that's low empty for you, so.
But, you know, I, you know, I mean, how many, I mean, how many of them do you, are you proposing to come off of Vonor Road? How many of these lots? Any of them or all of them come off of Udi Road?
They can all, actually, they can all come off Vonor, because, I mean, I've got a road goes down to my shop, and I've got an area between it and the property next door that can put a road down between there, and they can all go down in that way. I wouldn't have a problem with that. Because I don't, I just say, it's the same thing can happen to my wet area anyway.
Right.
You can make the approval contingent upon how many lots, can't we?
Can. Or, I guess you...
For 9 acres, though, the shared driveway would be more than 500 feet, that'd be, is reg, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if they tried to subdivide for the shared driveway standard, you'd have a 500 foot maximum. I assume what they're stating is they would try to subdivide the lots of butting, the county road for 50 foot per lot, and then just use a common drive, which would be regulated through our office.
Where is this in relation to Bishop Road and Archie Dutton's old store?
That's a long way from there.
You toward Loudoun, you back to...
Yeah, you know, Virgil Simpson's own, it's right in there.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
That is a big curve you know, it's now realized where, where it was.
Actually, I'm back this side of that curve.
Does it go all the way to Parks Place? The corner of our property is the back of Parks.
This property joins the Parks, uh, place.
Yeah, but if you go in the middle of our field and go back there, about where she's got that pine mound, it's behind the Parks Place, back in there.
Parks Place is the corner, reaches the corner of Parks.
Yeah.
Jim?
Go ahead, Ron. Go ahead.
Well, my question is, are we approving this for 3 lots or 4 lots?
As many as I can get, but would if you approve, at least 4 maybe?
At least 4, if we can get that. I'll take whatever we can get.
I thought there was like 4 or 5 lots, but if there is not, that's okay, at least 4.
So let me make sure I'm right, if it's 3 lots or less, they don't have rezone?
Correct.
If we approve to the A3, they can actually build 9 lots?
Not even a lot size is minimum. Now, whether the land will lay out for them to do that, that's possible.
So if you're concerned on traffic, you may want to...
I'm concerned if a vehicle tries to make that turn to the left, and you've got one coming around that curve, that's kind of scary.
So as is, as is, they can do, they can develop 3 lots under the current zoning?
3, 2, so 2 and 1/2 acre lots.
So, so that...
Yeah, I mean, you got just under 9 acres, correct?
Yes, yes.
I don't want to get in that picture from...
9.5.
Yeah, 9.5.
So, yeah, they can do 3 lots.
There's an existing home there on, at the top, right?
There is, yes, sir. So it'd be the house tract and then sort of the...
They'd divide 2 off, basically.
Like, yes, sir.
Well, it's on, they have access, I'm assuming. I'd make a motion to deny, and, and leave, deny rezoning, and that still allows the 3 lots, which is what they're asking for, as is.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second to deny, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Charles.
E. Resumee requests from R1 to C2 applicant Zachary Bodbay, property owner Natalie Goins, tax map 070L, group 1, parcel 006.00, located Highway 95 South, R1 suburban residential district, District 3. Mr. Bodbay?
It's got me, they, they have it wrong on there. Yes, sir. The, the property currently is, it's, it's 1 lot, but it's on the right side, it's deeded commercial, and then on the left, it's residential. I do have an approval letter from the seller that she would approve for that to go commercial. We have a exterior cleaning company, and we just wanted to build our shop, have my office there, and then as we expand, go to the left side there.
Jim?
This was heard by y'all, recommend, recommendation made by you all a few months ago for this same tract. It was then withdrawn by the applicant before it went through city council process. You all made a recommendation to rezon the property, and again, there's C2 around it, this is a residential tract, I don't know if there's ever been a house on the tract.
How big a building you going to build?
Probably like 70 by 50, you know, just 1, 1 story.
You got enough room in there?
4, 4 man. Yes, sir. It's, I think it's about 3, 300 feet of road frontage right there. 360.
Last time we heard this, it was for a garage, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Got it, yeah.
That's what it is, it's basically...
I don't think you got enough room to build it there. I know you got road frontage, but look the depth of it.
The depth? I've measured it out, it's...
You're going across the railroad?
Across, across the railroad?
There's railroad behind it. There's an old railroad field bed there full of grain tiles.
No, at the top of the hill there?
It's right behind you.
Yeah, or, or it steps up?
No, it's this side where it steps up. That's where the railroad was at. That's where that was filled at. I, I, I mean, I don't care to do it, but I'm just saying, make sure you got enough room before you buy that place, because I don't think you got enough room to build that there.
Might have to scale down, but this is just contingency on, on purchasing the property, so I appreciate that.
Jim, did you say this had been to the council?
It'd been before planning commission previous, it never made it to council.
She withdrew it once we rezoned it.
Yep, she did.
I'll make a motion that we, that we grant it for his purpose only, and that's all, nothing else.
I'll second. It's, we have a motion and a second. This is to go from R1 to C2, all in favor, chicken, if I have a saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you very much. G. Resumee requests from A1 to A3 for 2 1 acre lots. Applicant property owner Harold Brewer, tax map 043, parcel 031.00, located at 2425 Fairview Road, A1 Agriculture Forestry District, District 3. Brewer.
Yes, this is, me and my wife would just like to build down there. This is the land that's been in my family. Me and my brother, my parents passed, and almost 16 acres, my son built on it, and we just kind of want to be with family, you know, grandkids and stuff. Me and my wife want to come back from high school and build on that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we do this routinely. I know the property, know the family, and, and know the layout, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a move and a second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank you, sir.
No, we had the first one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm all messed up.
Yeah. H. Resumee requests from A-1/M-1 to CFD/M-1 applicant Matt Jordan, property owner Brogan Jasper Connor, tax map 003, parcel 021.00 and 021.01, located El Camino Lane, A1 Agriculture Forestry District, M1 General Industrial District, District 5. Mr. Jordan, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the proposal is to carve off 5 acres of the existing M1 lot, that'll continue to be, be mulch and more business until such time as they move, and another approximately 20 acres or so, that would be the CFD, that was a community district for these, for those ball fields.
And the school is in Farragut, and the kids will go across the interstate for their ball field, is that right?
The school is not at this time moving.
Jim? Any problems?
We've not had any calls regarding it. Obviously, they know there's things they'll still have to do through site planning, but we're going to be leaving the 5 acres minimum for the M1, which is required, and then this property sits across 2 different parcels, they'll be creating the additional tract, whatever it is, approximately 23 acres, which will be zoned CFD for their sports complex. Obviously, we can approve this request for this applicant, for this request only, and if they proceed in the future with additional lands, they can come back.
Just for concrete, Christian.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I may, Jim, didn't we have this a few months ago, and there was some controversy or contingencies to it, but now this vote is only for the rezon, no contingencies for any of it?
This is for the rezon only, yes, sir.
But no contingencies, only... But no contingencies on the existing property owner or the operation?
Nothing I'm aware of. I, I think there was some, correct me if I'm wrong, there were some concerns, was the owner currently, is our operation was moving or not moving? Uh, is he aware of this? I believe that's all been cleared up and that's why they're leaving that five acre tract for you.
So we've got forty-nine acres we're rezoning?
We're only rezoning approximately twenty-three acres, which they will purchase for the C F D.
What's the twenty-sixth going to be?
It will remain A one, that's right.
A one, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, resolution imposing temporary moratorium on the approval of residential subdivisions connecting to county roads pending the adoption of updated roadway standards and requirements for development approvals. Jim, you want to address this?
Again, if, if there's any questions we can answer, this is a matter of, this has been sent to the, the planning commission and the highway department to look at these safety concerns. We brought forth by county commission through the constituents. Uh, we're merely going through this process. We've worked on things, so it's not been stagnant, but there's been a lot happening. And we want to, at this point, give us opportunity to make sure what we do, no matter what it is, what direction we take is proper. This is a six month moratorium. It can be extended an additional six months or it can be expired at any time that, that, uh. We, we enforce regulations or decide worse, whatever that might be.
Jim, would this, would this moratorium impact any, and there may not be any, uh, projects that are already submitted or under review, or is this just kind of moving forward at this point?
This will be any of those submittals. So the things that have, that have already been reviewed, now again, if you have a project that was approved and they get outside the investment period, obviously, they could follow into that. But I don't know of anything that should be, uh, affected by this.
Motion to approve.
First.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. J, vote to accept planning and B Z A meeting dates for the calendar year twenty twenty-six. Jim, would you address that, any?
You got the, the, the meeting dates, the, as proposed, so if y'all approve those, we'll get the public notice as well. Make a motion.
Motion. I'm sorry.
Second. That motion is to do it just like it is now, okay? Got you.
It remains on the second Tuesday. What are those dates on?
Ain't no change. I know one time we had Wednesday this year, but we don't have.
Yeah, uh, we checked the calendar and we think we're right, but we shouldn't need to move it.
Second Tuesday? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Come on, man.
You got a motion in a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. County commission action on planning commission recommendations.
They have followed your all's recommendations.
What about the codes department, building activity summary?
Uh, don't have anything to add there.
Any additional public comments? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Update for the planning department?
Yes, I have a question. You know, sometimes we're working and there's some things and, uh, Mr. Waller brought one of them up, which is cul-de-sac in our subdivision regulations. As he says, we need to enforce it or do away with it, or maybe it needs amended. So we can do a workshop to address this, this thing, or we can put as an item for discussion of that. Look through the reg, get your all's information and work from there. Would you rather have a workshop or would, would you rather just have it as an item number of discussion in our regular agenda meet, uh, meeting?
You talking about the cul-de-sac issue?
Cul-de-sac length of six hundred feet. We really need to address, what does that actually look like? Right now the interpretation is, is if I've got a, an intersecting road here, then I can go six hundred feet to that to the dead end cul-de-sac. Uh, it's six hundred feet current. Does it need to be extended? Does it need to be eliminated? Uh, but one of the other needs to occur.
Would you prefer a workshop on it?
I was gonna leave that to you gentlemen as to what you would like to just discuss a little bit in a workshop or just put as a agenda item, go through what it says. Probably take us about five minutes. We can do a workshop at five o'clock if you'd like.
I hope you can do it in five minutes while we're having a workshop.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, let's put in a meeting.
Let me just get the information to you and then we can give you a thought process and we'll get it addressed.
Okay. Do I have a moment, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Right.
All in favor, say aye. You got it.
Good luck.
That's the question.
Say you got it. Say, Mr. Bowden? Eat supper with a Republican woman.
You ready? They call the Loudoun County Board of Zoners Appeals to Order. Roll call.
Ron Bright, Jim Brooks.
Here.
Son, I hear you. Leon Seale.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Everybody that's here is going to speak in this meeting, need to stand, raise your right hand, repeat affirmation. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you may now give and the causes now pending before this commission are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you God.
Thank you.
Everybody in the minute?
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items, branch request for accessory structure without primary dwelling applicant property owner Keith and Mary Cooney. Tax map zero three two, parcel zero four four point zero zero, located eighteen ninety-one Old Kingston Road, A one agriculture forestry district, F one floodway district, district five.
Gentlemen, thanks for your time. It's Kevin Cooney, just point of clarification. At least we got my wife's name right. She's the one that matters. This farm is, uh.
Why did I call you?
Keith. Keith.
Oh, I thought.
Okay, I've been called worse.
My fault.
Mostly by people that know me. We're looking at a piece of property that is on the other side of Old Kingston Road from, uh, the main portion of our farm. Uh, it is bisected, our hay field of twenty acres to the left is bisected by a road that was granted or the use of was granted to the pipeline, uh, people, I think it's Colonial. And it goes to their facility, which you can see in that little triangular area. The property in question tonight is approximately two acres to the right, which is, you can see there. That basically has just been grown wild and every five, six years gets butchered down. Really doesn't have any use to us. We have a farm, uh, a neighbor whose farm is just beyond the pipeline area. And he hays our fields. Uh, that's his there. He's got about forty acres. He farms our hay fields, uh, does that for us. Uh, he's interested in buying that two acre piece of property, uh, with the purpose of building a barn, an additional barn for, to store his hay. Uh, so we're asking for a variance that his property is not connected to it, should he be the person that buys his property. We're interested in selling it simply because it has absolutely no use to us in what we're doing and, and where we're located.
Well, he's not wanting to build a house on it. He's just wanting to build a hay barn.
It would only be a hay barn. Yeah, just the one that buys it.
Does he need approval for that?
This gentleman can build a hay barn there that is contiguous with his hundred and sixty-eight acres. But the neighbors wanting to buy just two acres and build a hay barn and he's not contiguous with his property, so it's just standalone. And, uh, so it's not an ag exempt building. He would have to have a variance to have the accessory building without the principal structure.
So how, how can we, uh, give the variance? How, how can we word the variance is what I mean to say to allow.
If you were going to grant that variance, then what I would do is word it to say, we would grant it for this property owner to use it as a hay barn for his agricultural enterprise. And if that were to cease, then the new property owner would have to bring their property into compliance. By dwelling.
If we grant this, he can build a barn, can he? He don't want to have a permit or nothing, right?
Yeah, technically he would unless he builds it while it's on his property and then he just subdivides it off.
Why would he have to have a permit?
Cause technically the two acre tract is not ag exempt. As long as it's his property, he can build a barn. But what would happen is he'll build the barn ag exempt, then he'll sell it off.
Are you gonna build the barn or you gonna sell it?
I want to sell the property.
And let him build the barn.
Yes, sir.
Either way, we'll work through that logistic if it happens, but, uh.
Anybody here, anybody here got anything on it?
I'll make a motion worded as Jim would say, uh, for the special exception for the sale, whatever he said, I, that's how I would.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, you're good. Branch request for fifteen front yard setback applicant property owner Kenneth Hall, tax map zero six six, parcel one one two point zero zero. Located twenty thirty-seven Kaiser Road, A one agriculture forestry district, district four. What you got?
Well, yeah, I've got an old house that's been there for years. Kaiser, part of the Kaiser settlement over there. The present house with its porch is thirty, well. In two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we were going to tear down the house and build another house. And we had a conflict of where the property line is or the right of way or whatever. And someone came out and said fifty feet off of the center of the road because like my fences were two feet off the road. Well, times have changed. We didn't tear down that house. We decided the market was flipped and stuff, so we kept the house. We want to add on to it now. The present house with the porch and everything with, I guess, the new regulations is fifteen feet off the center of the road is the right of way?
No, sir. Right of way is where the right of way is. It's assumption of a fifty foot right of way. I'd assume it'd be twenty-five feet. I don't know what the right of way is on that.
But that's where we ran into this problem before.
He has an existing house that sits off the road. He's doing an addition to the side that's not going to encroach any further into that setback. He's requesting a variance to do this addition.
So he, right now, he's already in var, probably in violation.
Yes.
My question is, you said you had a dispute over a property line.
Not property line, the right of way or whatever. Cause they were saying it had to be so far back off of the, the D handle.
Most time the road commissioner will tell you he's got twenty-five foot if it's not defined.
Yeah, it, it's basically pre-existing condition, uh, of the, the house was built before regulations. He's just extending on the side. He's not encroaching any further into the setback. The addition that we're adding is not any closer.
Got a motion in a second. Anybody else got anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're good. I see. Anybody else got anything?
Let's do it, Jerry.
Second the motion.
We're adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.